All right, are we ready? I think we might be.
Ready.
All right, welcome, everybody. I will call to order the Concord School Committee.
And I will call to order the Concord, Carlisle, Rachel School Committee, and we're going to do roll call because we have some members that are on this.
Anderson, President.
Mr. President.
Morano, present.
Randy, present.
Rankin, present.
Wilson, present.
And Sharon Witt may be joining us late. She is also in a different time zone, so she is hopefully going to join us at some point. And then I just want to note that our student reps are not with us tonight, and our new MECO representatives will be joining us later on in the meeting. All right, so for members of the public that might be watching, we have only one item on our agenda for this part of the meeting, which is our workshop. This is our school committee's self-evaluation, and we have asked Dorothy Presser and Glenn Kutter from MASCE to join us for that. And the evaluation we all did this summer was one that MASCE has actually developed. So we're trying to put it in as our best practices to really focus on our evaluations each year. So I will turn it over to Glenn and Dorothy.
Thank you. Is Mr. Connery coming?
No, they're going to come at our 6 o'clock meeting. He's not coming before.
Mr. Connery's father was our business manager when I was a school committee member.
Oh, my way!
A long time ago.
Just moved.
A legendary and extremely competent individual.
Oh, gee.
Let's see the name very off. So we looked at the data and we shared the data with you in terms of...
If you could move that mic closer.
Closer, wow. In terms of the rankings that you gave to the questions, and we can talk about that. We have some sort of summary observations, and then some recommendations about things that we might want to do as a group somewhat tonight, but maybe more later. Don't look for trouble where no trouble exists. So there are some areas where you see yourselves doing very well, and others where you see yourselves evolving or doing things differently. It is very clear that everybody on this school committee wants to see the district succeed and wants to see the students do well. The sense of unity behind the achievement of those goals is not unusual, but you don't see it everywhere. So that, we think, is a great strength. The difference is, I think, how you get to the work that needs to be done and what the means and strategies are to do it, not the commitment to the goals. This district has an unusually well-developed commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, fairness, and the things that go with it. But like many districts, how you get there, how you make the specific choices that achieve what you might want to achieve are very difficult to make. We all know that parents are not objective when it comes to what their kids need, and even the most dedicated, people most dedicated to equity balk a little bit when their children are possibly adversely affected in order to advantage someone else to level the playing field. So we deal with that, and everybody continues to deal with it. There is a very good relationship among the faculty members and the district as a whole. If someone had told me, maybe the last couple of times I was here, that the superintendent and the faculty would have a constructive relationship in Concord, Carlisle, I would have thought that that hasn't happened since the Johnson administration, the Andrew Johnson administration. But still, I think you have a lot to be proud of in terms of the relationship between the faculty and the administration and with the school committee. And that it doesn't happen overnight, but like most things, it takes time and dedication to that. The committee should be complicated for, should be complimented for what it's done, recognizing that new members need to be on board and need time to figure out what their roles and responsibilities will be. Dorothy and I had a discussion about this and how long we think it takes for new members to be really up to speed. And she thought it was a few months, and I thought it was a couple of years, so...
I'm already know.
Who knows?
I'm a guest.
So those are some of the areas of great strength. With regard to communications, the way the school committee members may communicate with the superintendent or the way the school officials may communicate with the public may be worth looking into in that, I'm going to say this very carefully because someone once said it the wrong way. Educators speak to each other in certain ways. Data analysts speak to each other in certain ways. And people who are laypersons to those conversations often feel left out. And we often, you know, warn, it's a big problem in higher ed when people from higher ed come into the community and try to speak to the community, and they start with "the ed you speak", and they leave everybody behind and feeling not good about themselves. We're always advising districts to be very careful when you speak at a public meeting, that the public will be able to understand what you're saying, where you're going, and how your goals ultimately lead, and your strategies ultimately lead to supporting the goals that you're trying to achieve. Now, I'm not saying this because I've watched the video, and you speak over the heads of the public. I'm saying that in many communities, it's a real issue. And when you're trying to deal with the public, and the public represents the entire sphere of political, economic, and social backgrounds that make up the community, you run the risk of bumping into trouble. Though we got some sense that some people feel left out of the conversation, and they feel left out of the conversation because the conversation is maybe not as user-friendly as it needs to be. There are some questions about sharing information and how appropriately information is shared with the school committee and how the school committee shares information with itself or with the central office. That also is a frequent issue in many districts. We always advise school committees that it's really helpful if everybody gets the same information at the same time. And my superintendent colleagues, well, I'm not a superintendent, but the superintendents that we work with are always saying, we're always anxious about surprises, people holding information back and not sharing it with us. And we sense that in the comments that were provided, that some of that is real and needs to be addressed. We recommend that you address some of this by having some variation and purposefulness in your meetings with academic presentations designed not just for you, but for the community. In other words, if you were to have the K-3 music people come in to talk to you about elementary music, we don't want to see six, seven, eight, nine-year-old children singing in rounds at the school committee meeting, sounding very lovely, but not telling you what music does for them academically. On the other hand, you don't necessarily want to hear a thesis delivered to the parents about how the brain works and how everything systematically works in. But you can quickly and efficiently convince the community that everything's worth it when they see value in the presentations of their academic programs. There are some districts that dedicate the second meeting of the month to an academic program.
Sorry, can you say that again?
They dedicate, meet twice a month on the second meeting, is about an academic program. So they might do elementary music one month, secondary foreign languages the next month, advanced placement courses the month after that, middle school math, special double feature the month after that, whatever it might be. And usually, the superintendent and the principals give the presenters a warning that this better be about student achievement, and it better be understandable. And if it isn't, we stop and we send you home. Because you really, the community really doesn't need to know that, oh, Terry Smith, the secretary in the department, is wonderful, and Terry works on Saturdays, and our commitment, we work Sundays, and we provide music for everything. They don't want to hear that. They want to hear how music or anything else advances student achievement in a very progressive way.
Can I just add one thing there? And also, how it relates to your goals, right? How it relates to moving the district forward according to what your strategic plan and your goals are. So, you know, tying that all together, because you, what you're, part of what you're talking about is, this is how we've used the resources you've given us to serve our students to further our goals.
We see members seeking to provide opportunities for all the members of the school committee to cooperate or collaborate or lead in specific areas. I don't know what you do for subcommittees, but subcommittees are a very good way to give people an opportunity to chair something. Some districts treat their budget process as the entire group working as a committee of the whole. So someone other than the chair might chair the budget process, which is having an opportunity to help lead the school committee in a particular direction so that you cultivate a growing cohort of leaders. As with many regional districts, you need to have a discussion about the balance between the communities in the district, Carlisle and Concord, where their different needs come, where the balance of your attention needs to go. The political science of all of this is that when you're elected to the Concord, Carlisle School Committee or any Lincoln, Sudbury, or anything else, your loyalty is to the district, not necessarily to Concord or Carlisle or Lincoln or Sudbury or whatever it might be. That said, that's a theory, and it's unenforceable. So you can't help but advocate strongly for those programs that you feel are most important. But there is, there is some concern that the balance of one town versus the other, or more importantly, the balance between where is the focus on student achievement as opposed to something else. Now, there is, there is always the pressure to protect the taxpayer and the property owner, who doesn't necessarily have any more or at all an interest in the public school system. Or they do, but they're just fiscally conservative. Some of us were born less fiscally conservative than others. It's, and a lot of legitimate issues in our experiences drive where we come from. But it would be healthy to have a conversation about how we balance those things off and to get a sense of whether or not we're leaning a little too heavily on one side or the other at any given moment or from time to time. Please.
I wonder if I could just offer up what I'm guessing...
Hold your microphone, sorry.
I wonder if I could just offer up what I'm guessing other members are thinking, too. And that is, when we hear Concord and Carlisle, we also hear Boston. We're a very metro, MECO-centric district as well. But your point is still well-taken.
Well, that is, that is true. And we'll say that we got some good feedback from the MECO people about how well they feel treated in the community. And it's a very important program, and we argue very strongly for it. And it does represent a commitment by the community that not every community is willing to make, so...
I think just one other small element of that is balancing the work that the group does of Concord, Carlisle work and Concord work. And, you know, how the meetings play out in terms of time or effort spent on those two factors. Because you're all, those of you who are Concord members are also Concord, Carlisle members. And then the region, I think, has some members who are Carlisle-only but to the region. So all your, all your meetings, do all your meetings have a section that's Concord, Carlisle, and a section that's Concord? So it was sort of...
Most.
We struggled with it.
Yeah, yeah. That struggle was...
Sorry, I'm coming, I'm coming. I would say the answer to that question is most. It seems now, in the recent past, we've collapsed our meetings into one evening. It used to be that we'd alternate between the region or, you know, and the Concord public. And what we're finding true to be more and more the case, I think, maybe I'm just speaking for myself, so much of what we're doing is big pictures, big picture strategic stuff, that we often find it applies to both, you know, everybody from pre-K to 22. So when it's, when that is the case, when there are these big strategic initiatives, I put like DEI in that, right? We put that in the regional meeting so that our Carlisle members can be part of that. And then when there's very specific Concord stuff, we put it at the end of the meeting generally so that they can leave.
Yep.
And that, that seems, I mean, I don't know, we've never talked about this, but I think it seems to be working.
Okay, and might I just speak? What?
I, I think that the, I'll just put another point of view. I think that the Concord portion of the meeting often suffers because we're kind of worn out by that portion of the meeting.
Yeah.
So we either need to figure out a different strategy or, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
And I, can I add something?
Yeah, of course.
I think also, sometimes on this student achievement stuff, when all of the K to 22 gets put into one, we lose a little bit of the focus from, from the Carlisle perspective on, specifically on the high school, so... But, I mean, it's hard because it is a threat, right? Like, what you guys have is a continuation, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think like this year, for example, we did all of our... Sorry, I don't know which microphone I'm going to, this one. We did all of our strategic plans on one evening, and we started elementary, middle school, and high school. And, you know, I think part of the rationale for that was to have the balance of, when the public's watching, they can see the continuum of everything that's happening in both districts. So that was a choice that we made to do that. We could have split it up, obviously, but we chose to do it that way. So definitely something that we can continue to talk about.
Yeah, I guess, I'm just saying, it might be a point of conversation.
Yeah, definitely.
Yep.
I want to talk a little bit about your fiduciary responsibilities. You have two general sets of responsibilities as elected officials and school committee members. One of them is the commitment to the education of the children in the district. The other is your fiduciary responsibility to look out for the well-being of the district, to protect the districts from its adversaries and those that would cause, cause it harm. And I'm not talking about specific individuals, but just people that might not be supportive of public schools, for example. And finally, to follow the money and be diligent about the money. So the laws around fiduciary responsibility and budgeting did not change in 1993 with education reform. So, I mean, the superintendent has the broad authority to administer the district as the chief executive officer. The school committee has the authority to deal with policy and finance and the fiduciary responsibilities that come with it. So we often see confusion and sometimes even anger around the fulfillment of fiduciary responsibilities. So when you develop a budget, many districts will segregate different pots of money into what we would call cost centers. Other people would call them line items. And I would say, for this purpose, this is the line item. It's all capital letters, the big line items. And when you put your money in those particular cost centers, you may include certain specific language provisions that direct where some of the money will go or how the money is to be spent. So you might have a fiscal directive to the superintendent that money will not be spent on organizations that have not, that are, whose goals and values are not the same as ours. They'll be spent consistently with our goals to help us achieve those goals. And some of the cost centers that we generally see, you, they're big ones. So for example, administrative salaries, educator salaries, other salaries for paraprofessionals and support people, supplies and equipment, fuel, transportation and travel, professional development, other. You might have seven, eight, nine, 10 cost centers. Now, in Plymouth, each building has 10 cost centers. The difference between a cost center and any other line item is cost centers can only be changed with the approval of the school committee. So this means, under my earlier example where I have maybe eight to 10 cost centers for the whole district, and I don't know what you have, at some point, the superintendent might say to you, well, this global warming thing is making, making sense because we didn't spend all we needed on fuel last winter. It's now March, and I've got some extra money. We don't need it in the fuel cost center. We need to move it to another cost center where we need to spend that money later. That requires the approval of the school committee. So we, and there are some districts that operate with a single cost center. Our budget is $50 million. Madam Superintendent, here it is. Spend it wisely, report to us quarterly or monthly or whatever it is, and we'll follow it and ask questions when we see those reports. Or they might put it in 10 different cost centers and say, show us how we're doing periodically so we know how well things are going. You could, if you wanted to, create hundreds of cost centers and make everybody crazy. You know, you want to move 50 bucks from one school to another requires approval. There are some districts that have done that. It's not really a good way to do business, but we certainly recommend that you have larger cost centers and that you get reports periodically so that you know where things are coming from. That said, because of your fiduciary responsibilities, no question about money is out of order. And there are people who, depending, I mean, I have a brother who's a CPA. He's, he's a minutia person with regard to cost centers. I have another brother who's a psychologist. He's, whatever you like, it makes you happy. Somewhere in the middle is, is, is a good balance. I know that there are people who aren't, are they're interested in the district's budget, but they're not interested as much in the narrow details. There are other people, some of whom have a learning curve, will ask a lot of questions about budget and will ask a lot of questions about what's happening. And for the, for the impatient, who've been doing this a long time, we need to understand that some people need to get a lot of questions answered before they acquire a measure of expertise that they would get after a while. We do a very extensive workshop on school budgeting for people who want it, but we also remind them that, like collective bargaining, you have to do it and go through it and make those dozens of decisions before it's over and before you feel comfortable. And then the longer you do it, the more experts you get. But I did want to say with regard to, to budgeting, sometimes there are people who are into the details, and sometimes there are people who are into the big picture. And we all live together under the same roof. We encourage the superintendents to make sure that they keep you informed about where movement of money during the year may need to exist. And it will always need to move because when most of you were working on your budgets for this year, you were mindful of some risk of inflation. If inflation goes away, the picture's different. COVID ruined everybody's budget plans, and none of what I've just told you would even make sense in a COVID environment. So there is that challenge. And next to last.
Can I just add, one of the other things under fiduciary responsibilities was that there seems to be some need for clarification around the way warrants are handled? That kind of came through in, in the survey as well.
Yeah. No bill gets paid unless it's approved by the school committee or it's designee. And that is a balance that goes, that's a check and balance in your fiduciary responsibilities. Now, you can't possibly read every word of every warrant that you sign. You can review them thoroughly, but I know one person who did read every word of everything.
Yeah.
Caught, caught a district on a one penny situation in Worcester about half a dozen years ago. We'll let that go for the moment.
Do you have a recommendation for, you know, the best way to handle warrants?
Well, first of all, the warrants are public documents. So anybody who wishes to see them and review them is welcome to do that. We do recommend that you designate someone to sign the warrants. You can do that.
Single designate.
Yes, a single designee could always sign the payroll. You may elect a single designee, if you wish, for your district. Some districts use a majority signing process, others use a subcommittee. You want to review them carefully. Some will be routine, some may raise your eyebrows. For example, sometimes there are legal fees that are high, and you might want to know where the money's going. And your superintendent may not be able to tell you because it may relate to an educator who is being counseled out of the profession. It may involve a student's education plan in a special needs school. It could involve any one of a number of confidential things where the only people entitled to know the details would be the educators who are involved with a particular student or the superintendent and the legal counsel. The, and the best way to respond to an inquiry like that is to say, these are confidential expenditures for the following purposes. What you don't want to say is, you don't need to know the answer to that question. That's a lethal response that you want to be careful that you don't hear. So there is that particular issue with regard to confidentiality of fiduciary responsibilities and warrants.
I think, just to maybe answer your question, after 21 years of looking at warrants? Yep. So it's funny, because when I first got on the... So it's funny because when I first got on the school committee, someone said, oh, the payroll, it'll tell you so much about what's going on in the district. I actually found out that the expense warrant gave me more information about what was going on in the district. And you start, once you've looked at it, right, you start to get accustomed to the flow of bills that come in. And the questions you may have may be, gee, this all of a sudden, this seems extraordinary or this seems like a new kind of expense that we haven't seen before. And so you can, then you can ask those questions. Also, I don't know what form you get your warrants in, but you know, just making sure that it has the right sign offs before it comes to you is another thing to kind of check for. But I mean, you're looking at it, Glenn's right, you can't parse out every single warrant and you know, and try to justify was this, you know, did we spend three cents too much for that box? I mean, we used to have, one warrant would come through every year that had this extraordinary expense for Saltines, like a box of Saltines was like $40. I'm like, that's wrong. No, it was a case of Saltines. The vendor just put box instead of case, but it would regularly get asked, right? Why are we paying $40 for a box of Saltines? So you know, just sort of getting a sense of how things flow, what looks normal, and then, you know, asking if things look different, new, and you know, just saying, you know, what's different and new about this? And you know, almost all the time, there's going to be a good explanation.
So I see many school committees do approve them at their meetings, but that's not a legal requirement. That's a practice?
You don't have to sign the warrant in public. You just need to sign the warrant.
Right, but I mean, just to have them on their agenda.
Yeah, it's pretty common for, it might be that a majority of people sign it or one person signs it, but the committee may also vote to approve.
Okay.
And that, that is a practice that many school committees engage in.
Thank you.
Or if it's single designee, don't you have to put it on the agenda? If you go to a single designee signer, then it has to go on the agenda with the amount.
That would be the appropriate procedure.
Okay, yep, okay.
But any member of the school committee can view any warrant?
Yeah. We see them all. We all get them.
Oh, yeah, okay. Any resident of Concorde or Carla?
We get them and then have designated signers. And that process, I love, I think Dorothy, well, you were gone, but the time this was changed in 2019, I watched it recently, that went into a lot of detail about why the process that we present and have.
Yeah, it was the municipal modernization act.
About, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, like most school committees, some of you have identified the need for clarity with regard to presentations related to data. How data is collected, how data are shared. That was a stupid sentence. I hope there are no English teachers watching. How data are collected and how data are shared. I want to say this about data. If you torture data long enough, it will confess to anything. Okay? I did not make that quote up. I don't know who did, but I love it. It's just whatever it is. You know, we used to, and by the way, bubble charts are technical fouls in the basketball game of data sharing. I don't know anybody who can understand a bubble chart. Or maybe some people do, I'm sorry. Those of you who paid attention in stat class will have the upper hand. But when you should ask for, you should ask for as much data as you feel is helpful. You should study it carefully and you should have somebody available to explain it to the public. And when I mean explain it to the public, explain it so anybody can understand it. Ask the first 100 people that you see at the market to explain what a standard deviation is or statistical significance. And well, you might find a few people here, but you won't find a lot. And when you present data, this is where a lot of people get in trouble. They just go over the heads of the public, they go over the heads of the audience. And sometimes if you're really clever, you can do whatever you want with data. So I'm just a warning that many, many, some of you have identified the issue of clarity when receiving data in reports, that it can be too complicated, that the public may not understand what you're trying to say, and you'll lose them and they'll tune out.
I don't have them, I remember that you gave out guidelines at the Summer Institute regarding presentations.
Yep.
Do you have a PDF of that?
Yeah, I can, not with me, but I can certainly, I can certainly send it along. Yeah, I can certainly send it along. Yeah, and the idea behind that was, I mean, really gets back to both the academic presentations is that went to, you know, to avoid the kids singing in rounds as your music presentation, that the staff be given some guidelines. When I talk to districts about, you know, or committees about, in workshops about, you know, where do things, how do your meetings go? What, you know, where do things fall down? A lot of times when they see staff presentations, they all just, their shoulders droop and they say they're way too long. And I think as school committee members, we need to take responsibility if that's the case, because I think in a lot of cases, we have not been clear to the presenters what we want to hear. So the idea of the staff presentation guidelines isn't that the guidelines that I'll send are the magic questions, but it's giving guidelines to staff so that they understand really what it is you want to hear about. You want to hear about how, you know, how, what they're telling you about impacts student learning. You want to hear about how it relates to the goals of the district. You want to hear if there's any budget or policy implications about what they might be bringing, you know, so, so thinking about what, why are you getting these presentations? And how do they benefit your work as a school committee in service of the district?
And also the potential financial implications, if there are any.
Yeah.
Just all those things are covered. Good.
Yeah.
One last comment. We are all one innocent mistake away from doing ourselves in. The National School Boards Association is now 40% the size it was a year ago. Because somebody at NSBA sent a letter to the White House and said, we need to protect our school boards where the meetings are being disrupted, where tires are being slashed, homes are being attacked, kids are being blamed for the fact that their parents are sitting on school boards, and we need the federal government to give us some strategies. We need, the FBI and the Secret Service have really good materials on how to defuse conflict, how to create a safe haven. And some haven, and somebody made the mistake in the letter of saying, you know, the kinds of violence that we're seeing are reminiscent of some of the things we see in terrorist environments. Bad choice of words. So the adversaries of public schools decided that the National School Boards Association had called parents terrorists and alerted the legislative leaders of states all over the country and governors to tell their school boards that they better distance themselves from any state association that is associated with the National School Boards Association. And 26 states pulled out out of fear that they were going to lose their members. Because of someone who wrote a letter that I happen to think was a really good letter, but got somebody angry. And the point is, we lose control of the words that we speak the moment they come out of our mouths. Things we may say to each other electronically at the meeting, whatever it might be, can come back to haunt us. So my advice to everybody is be a little more cautious. Think very carefully about the impact of what you say upon the ears of the people who hear it. We constantly, people who manage people are constantly saying this to their colleagues. I never do it MASC, it's not necessary, but in some of the places that I previously been. And just ask you to think about stuff like that, because sometimes you can just move on and sometimes you can reach a state of détente and sometimes you can't. And I don't know whether those states that pulled out of NSBA will ever come back in because they formed their own association very quickly. It's like, I was hoping it would be like the American League and the National League and we'd always get together for the World Series and we might even play a few interleague games, but it's not like that. It's the red states versus the blue states. We're very fortunate in Massachusetts that almost no one mentioned that letter to us. It just wasn't a big issue here because people, people understood.
Almost.
But you, hm?
Almost.
Almost, yeah. But you realize that you cannot take civility for granted or the ability to hold a meaningful public meeting for granted. And this is a message that we're delivering to every one of our school committees. So I just throw that out there as a closing thing. As Carl Malden used to say on the American Express commercials, you know, don't let this happen to you. So that's a bit of guidance. So I'm, you know, curious to see what, whether anyone wants to tell us we missed something, we got it wrong? We need to do something to move ourselves forward in any particular way. You are very fortunate as a district. This is a high performing district. The level of parent satisfaction is very high. The faculty morale appears to be very good. So you want to count your blessings in that regard. On the other hand, the board has issues it needs to deal with, like everyone else. And while they are formidable, I believe based on the comments we received, that they are surmountable. I don't know what those words mean, but they're big words and. Trying to use?
Glenn, Dorothy, thank you. A couple of comments, but first a question. Faculty morale is near and dear to us. It's important. Were there indicators in our work that pointed to faculty morale?
There were, there were comments, people that indicated a sufficient level of faculty morale that it was not going to be a concern. And that it was significantly different from what it had been in previous years.
Got it. Good, okay, thank you. Number two, if I might, through the chairs, a practical question. With our financial reviews, we're using the DESI chart of accounts. Does that then imply, because you weren't very precise about, and I don't mean that critically, about cost centers, does that imply that the thousand level is a cost center and subordinates are not? I mean, in a practical sense, what does that mean? Because it sounds like every school committee gets to define that for themselves.
They do get to define their own cost centers. Now, the DESI has its own reporting system.
Right.
So in order to keep them happy, you have to use what they use. But for budgeting purposes, it's not very difficult to, to put that stuff into, into cost centers that may be different from the DESI chart of accounts.
However, I do get the sense that a lot of school committees do use those as their cost centers.
Thank you.
Yeah, the DESI thousand level.
Because our prior finance director made a really concerted move to align us really nicely with DESI's chart of accounts and teach us to understand it.
Yep, that would, that would be, he would, I would not say best practice, best practice necessarily as, but I would say common practice would be to exactly do that.
Got it. Thank you.
To align.
To align, yep.
And then what about, am I, I'm just piggybacking, what about going, oh, I know, I'm sorry. What about, it's fine. What about going like beyond that? Like, so I find that when, when our group looks at a budget, we look at well beyond what would be considered the thousand level. And like, and I, and I will admit, I'm green on budgets, let's say, right? Like it's, it's, it's not my professional area of expertise. So I always wonder like, you know, when we are, as a body, are looking at the budget, what are the things in your mind that we should really be focused on? Is it, is it really just, should it like, and I know we can choose this for ourselves, but should it really be just those cost centers or is there a trim, like is there great value in looking deeper and deeper and deeper? I don't know.
But, but remember, I was asking about a formal vote. What rises to that level? Not what rises to the level of our attention.
Yeah, no, but yeah, sure. But I'm just curious of your perspective, just so I can know what I should be looking for.
A discussion you want to have, and you want to have it together and you want to have it with the superintendent is, right now, the superintendent is preparing the fiscal year 24 budget for you. The fiscal year 23 budget is being implemented. But for fiscal year 24, to say, we have our goals that we've established. Where do we want to look in our budget to see how our goals will be achieved, at least from a funding basis? And what do we want to monitor to make sure that we're able to do this? So for example, a very elementary one, if one of your goals was to narrow the achievement gap in middle school math, the question of the age, by X percent. Madam Superintendent, where do we look in our budget for the places where we support something like that? And the superintendent might say to you, well, we have allocated X amount of dollars for math coaches for middle school teachers, a new expenditure. We are looking at something else. We're looking at something else. Three or four different things that may affect the pursuit of your main goals. Now, it might be that your main goal is broader and that the average student will increase performance by X. If MCAS is being recalibrated, you might have to come up with different things to make that work. Where in the budget do we need to look? And how do we know that those are the right places to look?
So, and I would add that I think looking at the budget being developed and looking at the budget being implemented might have two different answers, right? In, in looking at the budget that's being developed, you're looking at what are our goals and are we putting resources towards our goals? Or if you're doing a year to year comparison, where last year did we over or under budget that we want to make sure is appropriately budgeted now, right? But then in the, as the budget is being implemented, you're looking more, you know, is, is, is it, are we staying on track? Or are we staying on track? Are we over or under? Are we making sure we're going to end the year, I was getting the color wrong, in the black, right?
Yeah. I guess my question too is, can like, so you've said, you know, how we might endeavor to look at the budget through the lens of our goal setting. Could the answer to where we give attention to the budget in some instances be everywhere? Like we don't, you know, like, and then how do we manage that if the interest is, we're interested in every piece of it? Is that?
There are, there are some things that districts do because they've always done them and they don't need to be done anymore. We see this a lot with attendance officers, truant officers. In some of our older cities, you've got cohorts of truant officers who hang out. I don't know what they do. I hope they don't watch and get mad at me, but certainly that's what happened when I was on the school committee. We had them for the longest time. And the superintendent convinced us that we needed coaches in language arts and we needed staff in English language learners, for English language learners. And we needed like a dozen different positions to do that. And one of the places we would go to do that would be to eliminate the attendance officers. And one of the places we would go to do that would be to eliminate the attendance officers. So there's a significant savings, and there's a redeployment of money. Now, one of the interesting questions that the school committee dealt with was, who are those 10 guys that you're going to lay off? Which is the wrong question to ask. And you don't want to ask questions like that. But a more thoughtful member would say, where are they going? How many coaches, math coaches or curriculum leaders are we looking at? Will you deploy them? How will they be prepared? How will they achieve their goals? How will we know if the goals are being achieved? And what evidence will you provide for us to do this? That's a, and I don't want to say you have 50 different conversations like that with the superintendent, but certainly in the larger sense, you want the larger explanations. As opposed to, you know, I'm looking at the line item budget for the Peabody School, and I see $2,000 for musical equipment and, you know, no explanation. What's the equipment? Why are you buying it? Who needs it? Will we own it or will we rent it? What are we giving up in exchange for that? Because if you're going to just give everybody one year of an instrument and then take them back and give them to somebody else, that's not sustainable. It's not a very good choice of money. That's, those are the kinds of conversations that school boards need to have, or school committees need to have. But sometimes you get into discussions of, I see we have a contract to the XYZ company for 5,000 bucks. What's that for? Can't find an explanation. Or worse, I see a contract for 1,000 bucks. What's that for? And it could be readily defensible, but someone exercising their due diligence wants to know whether you're throwing away 1,000 bucks on some fad or whether or not it's being usefully expended. And then sometimes people just don't know and need to learn how a budget is built or what a budget's made of. So that's why we all need to have patience, but we all need to be mindful of the fact that it's a very big budget with a lot of items in it, and we can't talk about every one of them.
I think in some respects, Glenn mentioned that some committees look at the budget subcommittee as a committee of the whole, right? That particularly when there are newer members on a committee, that having some of those budget discussions, so everybody can kind of get an understanding of how the budget is built and what went into it and the questions, can help everybody build that understanding and make things run more smoothly.
A more interesting question for us, I think, is talking about the balance between where expenditures benefit the achievement of goals or where the expenditures simply trim the budget. And by the way, I'm not demeaning that that's a goal. There are people who want an efficient budget that is defensible to the community. People are going to ask you this question. Especially, I suspect, in a district like this where you have longtime property owners who, through no fault of their own, are suddenly multimillionaires because their property is sky-high in value and they're paying the taxes to go with it. So, and these people have invested their lives in Concord and Carroll and are entitled to a measure of respect. But then there's the balance between the next generation and educating them and giving them what they need versus balancing the needs of taxpayers.
You state it well.
Well, you've got to have that conversation, and the public needs to hear it. And when you deliberate with your budget, those thoughts need to be transmitted. I can tell you, my previous job was as a regional manager for AARP. Older people were my constituency. And I can't tell you how many times I would hear people say, why are we spending so much money on those kids? They throw their trash in my yard. They're not respectful. They don't work hard. And I would always remind them, you know, those kids have jobs and they don't like paying their FICA taxes either. So it's an intergenerational compact, and building an intergenerational understanding can be a very big part of your communications agenda. Especially during an inflation.
The social contract.
The social contract.
Yeah.
There's a whole speech about that, by the way, that if you're ever in trouble and you need to defend it, it's
And who made the speech?
Claude Pepper.
Why is that name? He was a
Former senator, former senator from Florida.
Okay.
Who was a very good friend of the elderly and a close personal friend of my boss, the Secretary of Elder Affairs. So we would have speech-writing responsibilities whenever Senator Pepper would visit Massachusetts. Not that he wasn't good on his feet. But I digress. The intergenerational compact is important, and people need to understand that there's a legitimate argument to be made that we need this money for kids. And I may disagree with those people who feel that there's a greater balance to save money for the taxpayers, but I disagree with what they say, but I defend their right to say it and their right to be heard and their right to be respected.
So this is where we sometimes talk about the fact that your budget is really a policy document in many ways. And the fact that when you are a very, when you're thinking about your goals as you formulate the budget, it does a couple of things for you. You can talk about how you have used past resources. I mean, the budget's what, the resource you have to implement your goals, right? That's essentially what the budget is. It's your resource to implement your goals. So when you can talk to the community about the resources they gave you in the past and how you use that successfully to implement the goals and advance student achievement or advance your desire for continuous improvement in student achievement, and then say, and now we've formulated a budget where we feel that we have used the resource or putting forth a budget that uses those resources in a fiscally responsible manner to now further the goals. Look, we've done it in the past. Now we're asking for these resources to continue our work. You've got a story to tell to the community to get their support because you're saying, we did a good job with what you gave us in the past. We made it work. So now for our next step, here's what we're going to need to make it work.
I think the way that Jerry structured it around the DESI guidelines for the cost centers, but is there any argument to be made for organizing our cost centers around our goals so that you're constantly getting, so like, the goals that you're setting, you're getting updates from the superintendent and from the administration on, around those goals?
So I think
Does that make sense?
Sorry. So, yes, both, I think.
Okay.
Because you can get, you can get updates on the implementation of the goals
Yep.
without the budget part, right?
Okay.
The goals, I mean, that's a lot of, you're monitoring progress. That's one of your responsibilities as a school committee, right? We're monitoring progress towards our goals. We're evaluating the superintendent on the progress towards the goals. That's our job, making sure that they get implemented. And you can do that without the budget discussion. And then you can, you know, a lot of times, like Glenn talked about math and math coaches. There is another part of that. There's instruction, you know, instructional materials. There's professional development. There's a lot of pieces that might go into that math achievement, middle school math achievement. And to try and tie that consistently, I mean, you can do it at maybe at budget time, but to continue that conversation throughout the year, I think, would get messy. So having the goals discussion separately from monitoring the budget and the cost centers, I think, makes more sense. Does that make sense?
Any, any issues that you feel need to be flushed out? That you'd want to talk about while we're here?
Well, one would be warrants. Warrants is like, I'm hot on warrants because I feel like, I just feel like we need to flush that up. Another thing that actually came up today is our seating arrangement. We're trying something new to sit like this. So if you can kind of help us work through some of our issues with that, I think that would be helpful. We are going to have more members, and actually, I'm going to use this opportunity, Domingos, I think, is with us. Domingos has his camera off, but he'll be coming back again. And we have Ayesha Lauten also joining us. So we want to, oh, who's coming in the door right now? Oh, Domingos is here. So I'm going to use this opportunity to introduce both of them. Come on in.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing. You can catch your breath for a minute, and I'll just keep talking. So Domingos and Ayesha are both our MEKO representatives. We also have student reps. Our student reps typically have been coming via Zoom and don't come to our meetings. So we have a lot kind of, it sounds as simple as a seating arrangement, but we now have more people at the table. We want to make sure it feels like we're all part of the same team. And even, you know, we will have, sometimes we'll have members on Zoom, sometimes we'll have members in person. So we're just trying to figure some of this out. Typically, the public sits over there, but is there, should we rotate our seats? Should we keep our seats? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Also, I think the history on that was, interestingly, we had Rob Evans come in for a workshop talking about like our committee dynamics. And our normal seating is like a horseshoe. It looks like we're in a hearing or we're on the Senate floor and all that. And the first thing he said was, you don't sit like this, do you? We're like, yeah? And he's like, you all should be looking at each other. This is a meeting. It's collaborative. It's cooperative. So one of the ideas that we had moving forward for this year was to take that advice from him. But it admittedly is tricky, right? So now you have, you know.
30% of this meeting is in the back of my head, watching the screen.
Yeah, so, so do you have any recommendations about, you know, again, we just, what we wanted to do was, you know, I look at like our protocols or our practices, I don't know which one it is, and one of them is, you know, to recognize that this is a business meeting in the public, not a meeting with the public. And so, you know, our idea was, let's make it more like a business meeting rather than a hearing. And again, that was upon the advice of Rob. But it seems like we've got differing opinions on that, so.
I don't think, I actually, I don't think any of us should have our back to the public.
We want to hear you. We want to hear you.
I don't think any of us should have our back to the public, either on camera or if they're sitting here. So I don't know how to fix that exactly, but I think we, the horseshoe is probably the only way to
Or I'm wondering too, if we orient the tables like this and had no one on the short side where Dorothy and Glenn are, and then everybody. It's just a more
Certainly our members, right? Versus, you know, the way the select board sets it up is they only have Kerry sitting with them.
Yes, right, so.
I'd put in a request to have some configuration so that we can see each other easily. I don't care how you do it, but I won't see Tracy all night long.
Right. That's what I was going to point out, that I didn't think Court and Tracy could really see each other in this.
Right. So I guess like in your, with other school committees, do you find them sitting in a horseshoe? Do you find them sitting together?
So, interesting, because sometimes I ask questions about boardroom layouts, and I always get diagrams, like, this is how we wish we could sit. And it's generally some sort of a horseshoe, right? Everybody can see each other.
Yep.
I'm not, I kind of remember you having more like of an L.
You had like a U.
Okay.
But even legit, even before, even the way our seating was, it would be, you know, the admin units were here, the chairs were at the top, and other members were here. And that didn't feel right for us either.
Yep.
So we're trying to, you know, just mix it up a little bit and
Also, experiment and see, I would experiment and see what works. I mean, I've seen, I've seen committees that have tables that are not rectangular, right? That are
Yes.
The herringbone.
Herring, yeah, sort of a trapezoid. Is that the right?
Yeah.
So that they could put it in kind of a, you know, a way where everyone could see each other, and there would be a space maybe for presenters or, and the camera could be that way. So, so to your point that people, you know, people don't have their back to the camera, but also the ability to see each other.
One of the characteristics of a high-performing school committee, from the research, is an engaged chair who ensures that everybody has an opportunity to speak and that everybody is encouraged to speak. So I've often found that in those situations, such as with student representatives who are non-voting members, sometimes a number of districts have MEKO representatives or representatives from other organizations who are non-voting members seated at the committee. And it's important to remember that an effective voice at the table can be as effective, if not more effective, than a vote on the roll call. So giving everybody the opportunity to get experienced at speaking and to feel comfortable about speaking and to be called upon and asked to participate is a very effective way to make the process more democratic. And that could mean moving around so that everybody gets a different shot at camera time or recognition
I think what we, our biggest objective, and again, I'm open to anything. I don't, I don't have an opinion on it one way or the other, but what I think we've been lacking is intimacy. We don't look each other in the, you know, like, those kinds of things. So trying, you know, I think Rob was encouraging us to try to find a way to encourage intimacy with each other in hopes that it would, you know, organically kind of foster collaboration or whatever. And when it's, and I, and again, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think it felt very formal, the way we had previously set. But to your point, maybe we just experiment
Yeah.
throughout the year and see what works.
I think, you know, if you can't make eye contact with someone, first of all, if the chair can't make eye contact, they don't know who wants to speak, right? If, if, not to say that this happens, but, so if Tracy and Court can't make eye contact with each other, they're more likely to, it's like putting something in writing as opposed to talking to someone. You're more likely to maybe make a comment that you wouldn't make if you were making eye contact. And I think another part of that, which I, is if you have people on Zoom, don't forget about them.
We're pretty good about that.
Yeah. And I think another, a plus for this setup is sometimes, particularly in the Zoom era now, sometimes committee members have someone on Zoom, and they all have their laptop open in front of them to have access to that Zoom person. So they're not looking at the people in the room. Or they're looking at the people in the room, but through their computer as opposed to looking at them across the room. So this is a setup ahead of, at least ahead of that.
Just to that point, you meant, I think this came up at the summer institute as well, is whoever was facilitating, I can't remember who exactly it was, we're talking about meetings.
Yep.
Was encouraging the school committee members not to have their, you know, if they were monitoring Zoom, only have maybe a person on the committee do that.
Right, right.
So everybody's not looking at Zoom.
Right.
Unless they're looking at a presentation they can't see on a monitor or something like that.
Yep.
So, because I think we're, most of us looking at our computers, and maybe that's, that's even worse in terms of us making eye contact, you know what I mean? Like, you're making Zoom eye contact.
Zoom has in many ways been a blessing and the curse of our time. My experience is that 150% of the people on Zoom are multitasking, and it's hard to hold someone's attention. And on the other hand, Zooming makes it possible for people who otherwise would not be able to come out to an evening meeting to participate in an evening meeting. So it's been a little more democratic. I'm not sure that the quality of discussion and debate has been as, as high as it might have been for live sessions. We'll have to see how this works out, but it is interesting how our lives changed dramatically and quickly as the result as the result of the presence of Zoom during the pandemic.
Tracy, you had some introductions to make, I think, and I don't know if you had any questions on warrants.
So we're going to do it twice, though. And actually, before we do introductions, I just want to make sure we haven't forgotten about Sarah. If she had anything else to add to this discussion first?
No, I mean, nothing, nothing in particular.
Okay. Okay, all right. So I would, and we're going to probably do this again at six, if that's okay with everybody. We're going to do it twice. So Domingos, I'm going to start with you, because you are on Zoom. Would you like to introduce yourself to everyone here, and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Thank you, appreciate being here tonight. My name is Domingos DeRosa. I'm a father of four. I live here in Boston. I have a student who graduated in '21, one in '23, and one going into the eighth. I'm not sure what year she's going to graduate yet. I don't want to go too far ahead, but I'm just, you know, a, a community member who wanted to get involved with, with the school committee to make sure that, you know, we had an additional voice from families from here, from Boston, and to see and work with great folks like you guys tonight to add to the conversation. So we can, you know, put the students first and make sure that they receive the fair treatment that they all deserve.
Thank you so much. It's great to have you here. And Alexa and I and Ayesha and Domingos had a little coffee together yesterday, which was great. So we're looking forward to seeing you again in person, or on Zoom, either one. And then Ayesha Lawton is joining us. We'll give you a microphone, if you want to just introduce yourself.
So my name is Ayesha Lawton. I am, I was a Concord MEKO student back in '97, and I am a Concord parent. My son is Miles Lawton, he's in the eighth grade. I work in Boston. I run children, I'm a police officer, and I run children programming in Boston. So my relationship with Concord is, you know, 20-plus years. So that's why I was interested in this role.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right, well, we are happy to have you guys with us and participate. You know, I may, because this is our other concept of the table is, we want everyone to have a seat at the table. And I guess, you know, we're thinking about the public, but we are a meeting in the public, not with the public. So I, so I think that's going to be our struggle, is balancing what we want to do and, and giving the feeling of this, you know, every voice at the table really is equal and matters. So we want that to happen, but yet we will have to balance it with the public.
I'll just say, in this type of setting, it feels really, it feels great to have this. But if there were people sitting here, I would feel really rude. I would feel really rude.
So maybe, yeah, we'll, we'll.
I think the V, the V idea is a good one. I don't know, I'm sure there's a lot of different things we can try, but I don't want to have my back.
Mark was like, are you keeping it this way? Mark will be here to do it with us.
We can come early and help.
Can we do quick introductions so that Ayesha and Domingos introduce us?
Yeah, that's a really good idea, Court.
Want to start?
I'll be happy to start. I am a parent. I have a, two sons, one who graduated CCHS in 2015, one in 2016, with some out-of-district support that was invaluable to him also. Joined the school committee in 20, when? I don't know. I'm in my, I'm starting my fifth year on the school committee. Typically in Concord, just by custom, we might serve up to two terms, and then we're expected to roll away and let somebody else do it. What else? I devoted most of my career to community education and experiential education. I'm still very active at the K-12 and university level. That's me. And look forward to working with you and with Domingos. Thank you.
Dorothy and Glenn, you guys should introduce yourselves, too, because you're helpful to us often.
I'm Dorothy Presser. I work with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I, in my, along with being a field director with MASC, with sort of a focus on district governance, I was a member of my town's school committee for 21 years. We don't roll off after.
And you were chair for a lot of this, yeah?
I always say.
You watched the 2019 meeting, too.
I just say, you know, I was, they just figured out I was the sucker who would do the work. That was part of my longevity. But, so Glenn and I are here to hopefully bring some insights and, and assistance to helping you be that committee that focuses on best practices and student achievement.
You know, it's really interesting, and this is my 22nd year at, at MASC. My name is Glenn Kuchar. I'm the executive director. I was on the school committee in Cambridge. I was elected 49 years ago, and I served for 12 years. We adjourned the meeting the night Richard Nixon resigned, so that we could, oh, that's how long ago it was. And I just wanted to observe that most of you have never been to another community's school committee.
Watched a lot of them.
We watched them quite a bit.
You, do you, okay. And most of the people in Waltham have no idea who you are. And the people in Acton and Vauxborough have no idea who you are. We all think that we're important and unique. But I've been to about 2,000 school committee meetings, Dorothy's been to many herself. And it is very interesting, you're a lot more alike than you are different. And I fear that 25 years from now, if we dropped in from wherever we happened to be, there would still not be enough money in Chapter 70. There would always be issues between the unions and, and the school committee. And the Red Sox would never have enough pitching.
That's right.
It is, it is interesting. You know, things, things have changed in many ways, but in many other ways, they haven't. Middle school math, for example. The problem of the age.
Cynthia Rainey, just started my second term. I have two sons graduated in 16 and 18 from CCHS. And I guess that's it. Welcome.
I'm Carrie Rankin. I was just elected in February. I have three kids, two at Thoreau Elementary School, in first, going into first and third grade. And then I have a three-year-old who will soon join, I guess. Yeah, I'm excited to, I'm, I'm new with you. So we can ask questions and figure it out together, but I look forward to doing that.
Lori?
Hello, Lori Hunter, Superintendent. I'm excited to have you both join us on this forum, because we've obviously spoken in other forums, and this is a whole nother level of the district's work, and we're excited to have your input here.
All right, and we did chat a lot yesterday, but I'll just go again, because I guess I'd like to talk now. Tracy Rado, I have four kids. One just graduated from college, one in college, a senior, and a freshman at the high school. So I've been in the district for a long time. I think I started here with my kids in 2005, which is a little crazy. So I feel like I've been in public school my whole life, kind of. I was a special ed teacher before retiring to have children, I like to call it. But, yeah, so I'm excited to be on School Committee, glad to have you guys with us, and looking forward to this year. And then I guess we have Sarah next, and I want to go back to Lori, just if Lori had any comments from our evaluation, because we haven't actually heard from Lori yet. So Sarah, I'll let you introduce yourself first.
Hi, Sarah Wilson. I also have a rising senior, as I guess a few of us do, and then, and an incoming ninth grader from Carlisle. This is just starting my second term. And this will be my third year at the region. Yeah, and that's it.
And then we do have one member that's not in attendance, Sharon Witt, who is traveling on business. I think she's going to join us for the second part of the meeting. So when she joins us, we'll do another quick introduction. And then on to Lori. Do you have any other comments?
No, and I haven't reviewed, I haven't, this is the first I've seen the data, so that might give me more insights. But it sounds like you're naming some of the things to talk through. And I think if that could be our practice, that'll be good news all the way around as we get into a new school year. That's, that'll be exciting when I can talk to you about that. So we'll do the business at hand tonight, and then get ready to start the year together.
I have a final question. In terms of your recommendations, would you recommend anything, for example, like we should review our protocols and practices? We should review our committee handbook, which we haven't done in a while? Anything other than that that you think we should do?
I think you, you hit one of the things that we probably should have said earlier, that when Glenn talked about sort of onboarding new members, right? That it seemed from, that you have the basis, right? You have the protocols. Seems like there's a need to discuss and review the protocols. And, and hopefully, some of the discussion that we have tonight will inform maybe how they need to change. And in terms of having a handbook, it seems like it was done, but it's not really, it's there, but it's just there. It's not really being used effectively, maybe is the best way to say it?
I think just used.
You too, okay. Not being used, okay. So I, yeah, I think that, you know, we find that groups have norms, right? You have norms whether you articulate them or not. And one, one of the examples I always give is, in my school committee meetings, if everyone wasn't in their seat five minutes before the meeting started, we'd all get antsy. Where are they? Did they call? As I, you know, what, can we, we have to start the meeting on time? What do we do? I go to other places where it's 10 or 15 minutes past the start time, and people are still kind of walking in, and nobody's too upset about it. And we get started when everybody manages to get there. Those are norms, right? Nobody's articulated, you have to be there on time, or it's okay to be late. But those are norms that exist. So those are sort of extreme, you know, obvious extremes. There are other norms about the way you speak to each other, the level of, you know, the, the flow of communication and so forth, that may need to be more spoken. But when, when you actually are able to talk those out and agree on this is how we'll communicate, this is some, you know, not, not a rulebook, like, I mean, you have norms. And they're, they're what we suggest, which is they're kind of short and sweet. They're not a big fat rulebook. But making those living norms and making sure that they actually say what you want them to say, I think would be important in, in helping.
So I think unto that end, we, in our next meeting, I think we're going to do both of those things, review. We have two documents. One is our protocols document, which I looked in 2019, I think it was Bob Modell. It was like, what's the difference between a practice and a protocol? And you were like, ooh. And then you guys sort of talked it through. And I think where you guys landed was, protocols were in agreement as to, what did you write? How we do things. So as we revise those, I've done some work on that this summer, and we'll present them for review and discussion and deliberation. And then the practices are the, how it works. And they seem way more, like, to your point, like a little bit more perfunctory. We start our meetings at 6:30. We distribute the agenda on a Thursday. Whereas the protocols are more, they're, they're bigger, they're more feeling, if you will. Anyway, so, and I think that, I think the nice thing, too, that will come out of this review and is, and just working on getting our best practices and protocols in place will be like the review of them each year. You know, I think as a committee of best practice, and again, up for discussion, would be, do we review these every year? I mean, you know, I think that's a good best practice. And then sort of even codifying further when that would be. Is it in June, or is it in September? Is it in July, or is it in October? So, you know, I think those are kinds of the things, those are some of the things, the work that we're doing based on some of the discussions we had last spring. And I think those will all be, hopefully, good, good things. Anyone else before we gavel out and have a break for dinner? Going once.
I think you covered everything, the high, the high notes.
No, and I think this is, I think it's actually a really great time to be doing both of these meetings together, to look at our evaluation, and then go right into goals, to kind of really, you know, see where we're at. My last question just before we do end is, will you give us something in writing, like a narrative with recommendations, or no? Or is this?
We can do that. We can, we can do that.
Okay. Okay, and I think, because I do think that, you know, we'll all now have an opportunity to look through all this. And if anyone has any questions on anything, because we haven't seen this either. So none of us have looked at this document, and I'm like, oh, boy, this is a lot here. That would be great, if you had any, you know, recommendations for us. You know, it doesn't have to be anything lengthy, but, you know, we, I think we're all taking notes on what you were telling us, but it might just be good to have something, you know, tangible, that we can just go back to, you know, our recommendations from that night. This is why we're doing it, because I think that's important.
Sure.
All right. Well, with that, I think I would move to, I entertain a motion to adjourn the Concord school committee.
And I make a, I, gosh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Concord Carlisle School Committee.
So move, so move.
I think we could only have one motion on the table. Let me get my Roberts rules out, if you have it.
All right, so we will be back. We can stop recording now, we'll be back at six. No, we don't. We learned that you don't do adjourn. Matt Johnson, who's at the select board, has made that very clear.
I do just want to note that it's a different Zoom link for 6 o'clock, so anyone on has to go to the other agenda.
And Sarah, I hope you're going to bid us adieu. Good night? Or are you going to join us?
For the beginning part of the next meeting.
Past midnight, okay.
I'm still busy in Boston time, so.
Okay.
See you guys at 6:00.
11:30.
At 6:00.
All right, see you guys.
See you then, Domingos.
Thank you.
Save me a slice.
All right.